Welcome to the North Beach Town Council meeting for Thursday, May 14th, 2020. Due to the current public health emergency, the governor's, this one says stay at home order, because we're still in that, has set forth an executive order 20-03-30-01. And the sincere desire of the mayor and town council to protect the public health, safety, and welfare to the maximum extent possible, the general public may not enter town hall. Therefore, this meeting on the town council will proceed virtually as permitted under the Maryland Open Meetings Act. The public is invited and encouraged to attend the meeting remotely. I request all attendees mute their microphones until it is your turn to speak. Council members, you will be called on to speak by the moderator, myself, according to your last name after each item introduced and an explanation. When we get to the business items and the vote, I will ask for a vote one by one.
Thank you so much. All right, let's call it the Thursday, May 14th Town Council meeting to order. It is 7:03. We're going to open the meeting with our public hearing on the fiscal year 21 and budget, which I'm going to turn over to Joanne.
Okay. Hello, how's everyone doing? Everyone's doing fine. This is, uh, this will be our meeting on the budget, and this is our public hearing. We've had two on the general fund, one on water and sewer, and one on capital and EDC. Tonight is about discussing with the public and getting any input that they might have. I'd like to just review some of the items if everyone's had an opportunity to look at the spreadsheet on or docs. And then the notes also correspond to the spreadsheet, which the council is familiar with, but the public might not be familiar with. If you follow the spreadsheet, each column has a note beside each one. It's numbered, and that note will correlate on the notes on the other page. So let's start off by talking a little bit about the general fund. General fund, the tax rate is proposed to stay the same. There's no increase to the tax rate. Our current tax rate is .6329, and the budget is based on that rate. The constant yield rate that we receive would have been .6292. It's just a fraction of a penny reduction, but we're exempt from it because the revenue that we would receive by maintaining our existing rate is below the $25,000 mark. Again, it's very insignificant when it's spread across all the entire town. The most important thing to our residents, and we know how you feel about your trash service. I feel the same way. I live in town. We have set that rate as the same as the prior years at 327. There is a bid for trash that will be decided by the council. I believe it's at this meeting.
No, it's not. It'll be next month.
Next month, but I believe that that rate will be exactly the same. The highway user revenues, I don't know if any of the residents have watched much of the news and some of the discussion. That's been a big point of contention with a lot of municipalities losing highway user revenue. We've managed over the years to gain some of that back, but it's not ever been quite the way it was back in 2007 or 2008. But we're getting there. This year is an odd year, to say the least, with the pandemic. And I've never experienced anything like this, and I don't know if anybody else has, but it's been a learning experience. And with that said, there's some things with our predictions for revenues and expenses that are unknown at this point. So what we've done with the general fund and with all our funds is keep it as conservative as possible. So as you've went through or looked at this budget, you'll not see a lot of increase in any area at all. It may have been maneuvered around between different line items to help one project over another, but there's no increases to the overall budget. With that said, there are some specific items that people will take interest in. Of course, we have marketing, which, you know, is our Facebook and Twitter, which is very popular. It seems to be the most effective way to communicate. And if you haven't already, you should enroll in our website and get your information on a regular basis, just to keep you up to date. Like I said, we don't have any more new revenue or taxes to talk about. The gambling revenue, which is very important to North Beach, is estimated conservatively, and that will again be reevaluated, I imagine, before October, based on what the economy brings. And since anyone like myself, we don't really know what this is going to mean when we reopen. So we'd like to keep those things down, excuse me, as possible to reality. As far as any new revenue, there's no real new revenue listed here. It's just the, our normal estimates that we have. I can't foresee us having any large windfalls or anything like that, and the expenses reflect that. So I would say that overall, the general fund is pretty conservative going forward. One of the largest increases that you would note in the general fund would be the increase to the resident deputy program, something that we don't control. That's through Calver County. We share that expense with Chesapeake Beach. So it is split. We get 35% of the cost, but our deputies, it's for 10 deputies, and we do know that how much we appreciate them. I've really, other than some minor changes that were made, we've met on the general fund twice so far. It was April 2nd and April 16th. Since we met on May 7th, there were a few changes, and those changes are noted on the last page of the notes. And those are minor items, but one of the ones I'd like to highlight is due to the pandemic and the economic struggle with some of the small businesses, the mayor has laid out a plan to keep our inspection process for the businesses, but to alleviate some of the impact by doing away with the business license for this next year for our brick and mortar businesses. Excuse me, I apologize. I have a call. But that's a $3,000 reduction. And one of the other items that we weren't able to go over was a parking agreement we have with Calver Health, which they now pay for the parking for their facility next to the town hall, which is a, well, it's a revenue generator. It's not really a revenue generator, but it offsets the expense to the taxpayers. And then just some minor things, excuse me. And you'll note that there was an increase to the reserve fund and the general fund based on some of the cuts that we have done since the May 7th meeting. And you may note that the RAR parking for the MTA lot has been taken out of the expenses for FY21 for the general fund. It's not reflected in this budget. It's for the public hearing. So with that said, Mayor, did you want me to go through each fund? Or you want me to stop and take questions after the general fund? How would you like to?
Let's go ahead and take any questions right now for the general fund, so we can address that before we go on to the other funds. Is that all right?
That's fine.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Joe? Right now, I do have one, but I'm going to let every other speak first.
I have a question. Are we going to discuss this again? Or is this our only discussion at the public hearing?
This is the public hearing for the public, but you have, June 11th is a meeting with the council. There is a work session scheduled in June, Stacy? Stacy?
We can schedule one. They're scheduled on an as needed be basis. So if we need one.
I didn't anticipate one. I figured, but that's up to you. I mean, up to the council, mayor and council. If you choose to do that, that's fine, too.
We can feel it out and see how it goes, guys.
Well, you want to talk about item D now, or you want to talk about it in June?
It's up to you, whatever you would like to do. I mean, we can hold off, or you can do it now. It's up to you.
I would believe that, if you want my suggestion, is that this meeting tonight is any feedback from the public? And I'm aware of this issue. And I think any notes from the council discussing the changes to item D in the budget can be done in a manner that we can do it at the June 11th meeting.
Okay.
That's just my suggestion.
That's fine.
Do you want to open it up to the public then? Or does any council members have anything? Greg is still muted. I don't know if it's, if he, if he did that or we did it.
I'm not sure, ma'am.
Thanks.
All right, there you go.
We're on mute now.
I usually, Jeff and John need to speak, so go ahead.
Okay.
Paul, all right, well, good. We're going to open it up to the public?
We should.
Okay, no, no, absolutely. I just, I didn't want to cut him. I apologize. It's still difficult. I don't want to cut anybody off. It's, you know. Paul, go ahead and open it up. I think it is already.
If anybody has any comments or questions, I can put it into the chat. I put a note in there already stating that. I don't see anything in there at the moment, but let's give it a minute or so, and we can see if anybody puts anything in there. It's also a little challenging here with trying to get comment in sort of a structured way with all these people on the call.
We'll give a little bit of time. Where are we going to go? I'm teasing.
I guess we're going to do that. Stacy, did anybody put any email comments or questions in?
No, they did not today.
Well, I think it's safe to move on.
Here's a question. There's a question that says in, this is actually from Lisa Garrett. In sewer and water, there is a line item called shellfish tank. What is that?
That's, that is an overflow tank at the wastewater treatment plant. That's to catch when we have high amounts of rainwater so that the plant doesn't, the sewage doesn't overflow into the bay. It helps contain that should the runoff from the walk, from the stormwater be too high.
Anything else, Paul?
That's all I see at the moment.
All right, well, let's go ahead and close the public comment and move in. Oh, I'm sorry. No, we're not. We're going to go into the next fund, right? Sorry.
Yes.
I apologize. Go ahead, Joe.
It's okay. The next fund is the sewer fund. And again, not any real changes other than the fact that we are still following our conservation plan. And our conservation plan is the reduction in the minimum usage and the leveling off of the rates for water usage over the minimum. Eventually, we will get to a structured fee where Calver County, and you might have looked at Calver County's rates. There is a flat fee, a minimum flat fee, but then each person or each resident, I should say, is billed just for their usage. So if you are a person, say, a person of one in a household, and you don't use 5,000 gallons, you only use 2,000 gallons. Eventually, our rate will be so that you only get charged for those 2,000 gallons. If you are a resident who is, does 6,000 gallons, then you would be charged just for your usage of 6,000 gallons. It is no more just a flat assumed usage for everybody. And the structure is meant to conserve water, to help everyone be aware of the, how important water is and how much we're going to need it moving forward. But that's the, the main thing. The only other thing in the sewer fund is that there is a capital item that is so very fluid with Chesapeake, the wastewater treatment plant, that the partners have not yet solidified. So that may be one of the changes that come forward. But at this point, the rates are within the structured plan. The minimum would go from 6,000 gallons to 5,000 gallons. And then we would lose one of the tiers. It would be a reduction of one of the tiers, which is actually the, where the rate was $5 for sewer in FY20. The new rate would be $6. For the, anyone who uses more than 50,000 gallons, which we only have a few. It's $7.25 for FY21, and it's currently at $6. So that would be the basis of the structure for the water and sewer going forward. That's the sewer portion. So minimums going down to five. The benefit fees or special assessments that are shown on your tax bill will remain the same. So no increases there. And that's, that's the sewer fund. Water fund is much the same. Couple projects in the water fund are self-funded. And what's that, what that means is we're funding those projects and they're large projects through our reserve fund. That helps us reduce costs to the residents. We don't pay legal fees. We don't pay bond counsel. We don't pay interest because we're funding it ourself. So each year, excuse me, a certain portion of that will be returned to the reserve fund. But it helps keep the costs down to the customer. And that's why you don't have a lot of impact by that. It's all positive. And then the next would be, the next fund to address would be the capital. And Mayor, I think you probably want to talk a little more about the capital because there's some good deeds in the capital.
Yeah, let me, I apologize. Let me pull it up again. I printed everything out, but.
It's okay. Some of the items in the capital, there's some major stormwater projects that are going to be happening. We do have the cleaning of the, the outfall pipe from Bay Avenue to Chesapeake Avenue, which is happening this fiscal year, and that's a shared cost with Calver County. Then we have the upgrades to the two pump stations in FY21, which are Fifth Street and Ninth Street to help address some of the rain. When it rains, if it floods down in those areas to help evacuate that area faster. And we have a flood study that looks like we have the potential to be funded through DNR or MD, I believe. And plus the library. So we're excited about that portion of it. Those projects are listed to the left of the spreadsheet, and they pretty much describe what they are.
And we're close. Sometimes DB and I don't really know if we really are, but we feel like we're very, really close getting started on the clean out on Fifth Street from the Boys and Girls Club to the Outfall, which is by the Welcome Center. We're real close to that. And we're excited because we've been talking about it for years, but there's a lot of moving parts. You know, we've been working with, with Calver County for the last 18 months. And they have a new county, and I was good friends with the old county administrator and obviously the new one. And we feel like we're getting closer, and that's going to help us alleviate some of the issues down there. So we've made a lot of, lot of, made up a lot of ground over the last 18 months. Obviously, if you know me, I want it done faster. The, the flood plan, the 75,000, DB was told that, that individual said 90%, they feel 90% we're going to get it. So we're just waiting for that to come over. And that's going to be finally, you know, before when we would, we would go apply for something, they said, well, you need a plan because we can't give you the money to do the work unless you had a plan. Well, the 75,000 to us is to pay for the plan. So now we'll have the plan, and then it will open up our opportunities with grants and so forth. So, I mean, that's, that's a huge deal. We've been talking about it for a very long time, and I, you know, I'm very excited about that. So we do have a lot of big projects. And, and I think there's been a lot of things already done based off Capitol improvements, and you're going to see a couple more over the next 90 days, truthfully. I think there's going to be three big projects starting in the next 90 days. So hold on tight, unless DB has something or, but yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Okay. The last fund that we talk about is economic development. And that fund is funded through a portion of the fees that are charged to access our beach. And with that, we're able to pay for a portion of code enforcement, some of the Christmas programs, a part of the ecotourism director's salary, actually, it's most of the salary, and then code enforcement, those type of things, and advertisement, which is a big deal. And you see that we've been able to reduce that cost mainly due to Facebook and Twitter. We're very popular on those two social media venues.
Very popular.
Yeah, we, we, we try to keep that going, and Dawn does a wonderful job on that. So those are the things that are highlights in the budget. The notes pretty much go through and give you a little more detail. If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to take them. You want to open that up to the public, Mayor?
Absolutely. So if, if the public has any questions, please pass them on. You can type them in. And even after this, you know, obviously, you know.
There is one more meeting of the budget, and that is the June 11th meeting.
Yeah, so this is not the end.
But it has to be passed on June 11th.
All right, keep looking down, guys. My camera is at the bottom of my computer and paperwork. So I know you don't want to look at my bald spots, but I'm sorry. I did get a haircut. No questions?
We've got two comments right now in the chat window, but it's actually not related to the budget. So I'm going to hold these off until we do normal public comment.
All right, good.
Paul, can you turn up your volume, please?
I can see what I can do, yes.
All right, so that is the four areas, the general, water and sewer, EDC, and Capitol improvements. Counsel, you've had them. You can continue to look at them. Obviously, we could have a possible work session next month and also throughout the month asking the questions. If I don't have any more public comments or any public comments related to the budget, then I'm going to close our public hearing and go right into our council meeting. Okay, let's go into our, our, what's that?
You got to close it.
All right, can I have a motion to close our public hearing for fiscal 21 budget?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sound like five. So moved. Six, I mean. All right, let's go ahead and call to order our, our, our town council meeting. We're going to start with the pledge allegiance. And Gwen, since I see you looking right at me, I would like to lead the way, and then we can lip sync if we have to.
You guys can follow along. All right. A pledge allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
Mayor Benton?
Here.
Mr. Dodson?
Here.
Ms. Hagan?
Here.
Mr. Hummel? Ms. Lawton?
Mickey Leeve?
Mrs. Chiata?
Miss here.
Mr. Trunkhead?
Here.
Dr. Chiata?
Dr. Chiata.
I think that might be better.
I think so. It sounds, it sounds better.
That works. I'll take that.
Okay, good.
I hope you would.
I earned that.
All right. Sorry, guys. I'm just getting my stuff organized again. All right, so now we need to, now we did have a change on the agenda. If Stacy did it while y'all are not paying attention, the couple minutes, I'm teasing. She added the ordinance 20-01-fiscal 21 budget introduction. So having said that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda with that one change?
So moved. No, I didn't see him.
He did. Mickey did.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. Okay, Gwen.
All right, all right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you so much. And I know this is a little difficult because of the delay and stuff. Now, we have three minutes that we need to approve individually, so just bear with me here. So the first one is going to be, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April 9th, 2020 town council meeting as written.
Just somebody, just somebody wave. Gwen, okay.
Second.
Elizabeth, okay.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, two more. To approve the minutes from the April 16th, 2020 work session.
Gwen, okay. You're going to second, Jane?
Yep.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds good. Last one, minutes from the April 23rd, 2020 work session.
Mayor, hold on one moment.
I'm sorry, what happened?
On on board docs for the six, the April 16th.
All right, let's go backwards.
Yeah, I, I tried to go up for the discussion part.
I'm sorry.
On board docs, the minutes for the 23rd were put on the 16th. And then the agenda for the 23rd was put on the 23rd. So I didn't see the minutes for the 16th.
Yeah, minutes.
I looked at him earlier. It, it could have been me. I pulled it up.
Oh, no, maybe I looked at the wrong.
So.
Give me a second.
No, you're right. For the 16th, the minutes of the 23rd.
Oh, yeah.
No, you're right.
Sorry about that. All right, so we need to go back to them.
So just, um, we can approve the minutes from the 23rd next month. We'll just move that one.
Do it down with an adjustment.
Well, you guys haven't read them, though.
We haven't read them. So April 9th was fine. April 16th is fine, correct?
No, April 16th are the ones we're missing.
Yeah.
Okay. So April 23rd is what you have?
Yes, and I moved to accept those.
Thank you, Mickey.
Okay, that's weird.
Can I have a second?
I will.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your patience, guys. I, I know this is not easy. Question, all in favor? Let's take our time here. All in favor, say aye.
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 So what we have not, we will not approve this, this time is the April 16th minutes.
Correct.
Still, you still have one more set. Flip the page.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, just reject the April 16th. All right, let's go to the minutes from the May 7th, 2020 work session. Need a motion to approve them as written.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. I think that was everybody. If not, I apologize. All right, in inside of your packages, you have the town limit report. You have the public works report. You have the town engineer has no report in there because he, I don't, right, he, no, no report for Paul. Don't worry, you have more coming from him next month, I promise you. Code enforcement is, is.
He was having trouble getting that over to me. His scanner is not working to his computer. So we weren't, I wasn't able to get that from him.
We will get that from him and load it as soon as possible and get it out to everybody and get it to the public as soon as possible. Might be something Paul might have to step up and help out a little bit with. Marketing is in there. You see the file? The parks are in there. Development specialist is in there. And we've also this month have the museum. She did a little write-up her and I talked about. She, she submitted that also. And I skipped over to treasurer because she's here and I, I just want to see if there's anything that she wants to get from her report. Because I know tonight is about, was a public hearing. So we have all of those items in there for the public and for you to view. Please, if you have any questions for any of the department heads, reach out to them, call them. They probably would like to hear from you. They feel a little, a little lonely right now sometimes. So please reach out to them. Joanne, I do want to go back to you with the treasury report that.
Wait, Mike, Mayor, can I, can I say something on the, um, on the grants from the development specialist?
Yes.
Do we need, should we let people know if I'm reading this correctly, under what was awarded, the Healthy Home Program?
Yeah.
The $50,000, but I mean, this is really good news, right? We got another $50,000 that was awarded. This is for energy efficient upgrades and.
For the whole county, not just us.
Right, exactly. So even more reason to, it's kind of first come, first served, if I remember correctly.
It is. Yes, it's first come, first served.
So we should just make the public aware of that. Maybe we can even put a, a notice out on if Dawn maybe was probably already planning on doing that, but it says, apply early. The program will start in July. Look out for the new application on or before June 1st. So that's coming up really quickly. People can apply and if they meet the eligibility, they get energy efficient upgrades like on HVAC and things like that. So that might be especially helpful right now with people, you know, losing jobs, et cetera. And that was our circuit writer that got those, those funds for North Beach, even though it's, it's for the whole county.
It helps with insulation also.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure people are aware of that funding that's available.
Yeah, there'll be, obviously, as always, we'll do a large announcement between Veronica and, and Dawn. They will get it out to the public. So the public will know through email blast and and all the routes that we take always. So absolutely.
And Dawn just confirmed that in text, saying that she'll send it out as soon as she gets the info from Veronica.
Awesome.
Fantastic. Thank, thank you, Gwen. Joe, I just want to give you one opportunity. If you wanted to, do you have anything you want to pass on about the treasury report?
This month, we, we look very good considering. I'm, I'm pleased with my report.
All right, again, if you have any questions, please, the numbers are in there. Give, give Joe a call. Just double check real quick, guys. Everybody.
We have to accept that report.
What's that?
We don't have to accept it anymore.
Because it's, it's, it's passed. So, yeah. So we got rid of that a while ago, but just want to pass on that our staff is still working about, look at the reports. They're still working hard. They might not be in this building that I'm sitting in right now, but they're working and, and, you know, we're, I'm blessed to have a, a constant conversation with them and, and the ideas are flowing. They're, they're really making things happen from their kitchen tables that is, it sounds easy, but it's not easy. It's not easy to continue to work from your kitchen tables. I've seen a couple of them so far. And let me tell you something, they're all on their kitchen table. We might, we might have to rent space from them here soon. Let's move into public comments. Paul, can you take over?
Sure, we've got two here so far. I've got one, a one from Quinn from the census says, just wanted to give an update. North Beach is at 58.9%. I assume this is respondents. And Chesapeake Beach is at 69%. So we're about 10% behind. So Mr. Mayor might be buying.
I want to recount. I do not believe that's correct.
We've been 10% behind during the whole thing.
I know. Y'all keep telling me that, but I don't like to hear it. Mahoney likes telling me that, but I like to hear. Well, we're going to give them one heck of a fight. I know that. And Quinn, I appreciate you rubbing it in. I know why you did it, but, you know.
It also is that Calver, Calver County is approaching a milestone from the past 10 years. I assume that means it's higher than, than last time perhaps?
Oh, good. Well, this is, I mean, what we're going through right now is like, is, I mean, if, if there's no other reason why you fill it out is because of, I mean, these numbers are important from the census to help your local community get what it needs. And we only have one chance in 10 years to get it right. So we need many people as possible. If you know a neighbor, just to talk to people, as I say, the buddy check every Sunday. I say, go outside, check on your neighbors. See if they did the census. I mean, we, everybody to fill it out. I've talked to the three apartment buildings already a couple of times now. Begging them to go door to door inside of there, saying, please, I mean, talking to managers there. So they're already going door to door for all their things. So I'm not putting anybody at risk. All right.
And the other one is Kathy. I believe this is for Stacy. It says, I'm interested in volunteering to be on a committee. Let me know how to do that.
Fantastic.
Kathy Wolfstein.
It just says Kathy. I don't know.
I think, I think I know who that is. Just to let everyone know, all of our other committees are not meeting at this time due to the pandemic. And as soon as we get back in the office and our other committees can gear back up.
We're still moving along on stuff, guys. It's just that if it's not, if it's not something that has to be done, we're doing our best to work around it right now. You know, obviously Stacy is, is, is really, you know, the, the contact for the events and a lot of other things. But the point is, is that she's on top of all of that. And as the other events roll out, I know Donnie Bell with the flood committee, I mean, just, we will do things as we have to. We're staying in communication with people, but you, there's nothing being neglected or left behind. I can only say it that way.
Yeah, Lisa's been keeping up with Sustainable Maryland because I've been having things where I haven't been able to participate. She has.
Her and I, I told her, take the lead, run with it, do what she's got. Paul, you, any other questions for public comment?
That is all I see.
All right, well, let's, let's move on to business item number seven or item number seven, which is business items. This is the good part. I think I'm extremely excited about this opportunity. And DB, are you, yeah, he's on mute.
Yeah.
DB is going to talk about this tonight. We're going to award the bid for the installation of the street light replacements and installation on Bay Avenue. So, Don, can you please lead, lead the charge here?
Yeah, we've been talking about this for a while. Everyone knows we're going to replace all the existing lights in the flower beds along Bay Avenue. Stacy did put it out to bid. She contacted several contractors, I think as many as 10 electrical contractors. We had a pre-bid meeting. It was a mandatory meeting. We had three contractors show up. We did receive three bids. The prices were a little all over the place. K&amp;H Electric, they came in low bidder, right around $33,000. We had one for, and Stacy, you might have helped me out like 58,000, I believe, and one as much as 90,000.
Yeah, 98,000.
Right, 98,000. But we did have a, before we did this, we got a preliminary cost estimate and the cost estimate was around 32,000. So I think Rick's bid, the reason I bring that up, I think Rick's bid is legitimate and in the ballpark. That will be taking out the old lights, putting up concrete bases, installing new lights all along Bay Avenue there in the flower beds. I think we know Rick's been in town long enough to know he did a lot of work for the town. I think he's, you know, reputable and I would, I would recommend him to award this contract to have K&amp;H Electric to install.
So I'd like to make a motion that we award this bid to K&amp;H Electric for 32,396.
Second.
Wow, that was easy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I see a hand, see a thumb? Two thumbs, maybe three? All right, I, I'm, I'm almost guarantee you it was six love. I'm almost guaranteeing. So congratulations to K&amp;H. I, I believe they said all the materials in, they could probably get started next week, right, DB?
Yeah, all the material is at the public workshop. I kind of notified Rick that he was low bidder. We didn't say anything about him getting the award, but we notified him low bidder. And the reason we kind of wanted to give him a heads up is we want to get this work done before the major planning goes on in the flower beds. And we think we can probably do, do this and won't disturb the plantings along Bay Avenue.
I'm excited. Congratulations, guys. That was a good deal there. All right, let's go to business item number two. The Koi Pond Cleaning bids. One thing's, one thing that Stacy has really worked on is going out and not just posting it on E, E Maryland and, 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 you know, all that. We actually are going out a distance and, and sending notices out. So I think that's the reason why we got this, the, the professionals that we got to give us this price on this is because we, we went out looking for people to, to get them to bid on it. And we had a good amount of number that were, were approached via the different techniques. So we get the best price for our residents. So, Don, I know you've been doing research on this company. Explain about them and how, what high-end caliber company they are.
Yes, as you said, Stacy went out and we did the same thing as we did with the electrical. We contacted any pond company within, you know, pretty good radiant hour radius of town. We tried to get as many bids as possible. We did get two bids on the cleaning. One was 18, right around 18,000. And we had another bid coming like 13,500.
It was eight, Harmony Pools was 12,460. Harmony Ponds, I'm sorry.
There we go. Harmony Ponds in here in Norton, Virginia. We asked each contractor to submit three references so we could look at them for doing work with the size ponds that we have. They did submit three references and I was kind of impressed. Clyde's Restaurant in DC, it's a pretty big chain up there, pretty high-end restaurants in DC. And we do have a resident that lives in town that is a chef for Clyde's. So it was kind of nice to talk to him. And also I talked to their, kind of their maintenance, construction type guy. And I talked to the two other references and both of them gave very high recommendations. I did call the company, talked to them a little bit to make sure they were capable of dealing with fish, storing fish. Patricia, who's the maintenance supervisor there at the company, emailed me some pictures and showed me some ponds that were larger than ours. And where they had temporary, like above ground pools set up, they had to fish, koi fish in them. So I feel really confident that they can do the job. They've been in business since like 1996 and a couple, Sibley Hospital, Rock Creek, Up There Park in Fairfax, Virginia have used them almost since 1996 and haven't switched. So that tells me a lot about, you know, how reliable and how they show up. So I would recommend also awarding that to Harmony Ponds for the cleaning of the Koi Ponds in Sunrise Gardens.
Donnie, can I just ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're proposing basically exact same service. Like I saw something under Garner where it said that didn't include the, the pump or something else. I just want to make sure it was.
Apples. We had a real good contractor come out last year and he looked at it and he gave us a scope. You know, we worked with him to get a scope of work because it had never been cleaned before. So we came up with a scope of work last year. And what we, me and Stacy did, we used that scope of work for this bid. They were talking about, he recommended using it, putting in another filtering system to help. But we didn't include that as part of the bid. Garner asked a couple of questions, but we told him to bid on, you know, what was the RFP. So both Garner and him did bid on the RFP. So, you know, the numbers were bid on what was in the RFP, not the additional work.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Did we want to talk about upgrading the filtration, though?
I think we do. Once we get them in here and clean because of the references in a way, a lot of people talked about them today. You know, I mean, over the last couple of days, I've been calling around. I think they'd be a great company to partner with. I'd like to see them clean it, get it clean. And then while they're there, get some recommendations for, you know, stuff that could help or help with filtration, maybe. Everybody was really, you know, really talked good about them. Like I said, I just saw the pictures today and they did a couple of really large ponds. So they might be able to, you know, recommend something and give us a budget for, they do, they come in, they do quarterly cleanings for several large places. And they have like a maintenance type contract, you know, every quarter they come in and do stuff. So we could talk to them about different things and get some pricing.
So this is for a one-time cleaning or?
This, yes, this for a one-time cleaning. It's never been cleaned since we built them. It's probably going on five years now. So it's really overdue. And originally, we got a price of 20,000. So I'm really happy with the price that we received for the type of contract and company they appear to be. But yeah, this is Jane, a one-time cleaning of both ponds. And then they'll, you know, put all the fish back, replace some plants. But it's pretty much overhauled, really good power wires, good cleaning of the pond and the filter system.
Did they give a timeframe on how like, how long they think it'll take?
I did call because I was kind of curious about that. And they're thinking a week, you know, coming on a Monday and they'd be done by that Friday. So we could be back open for the weekend. And I checked with her on her schedule. They're thinking like the first, second week in June, they could get out if we, if we were to award it tonight and give them notice pretty soon. She said that, you know, it's a busy season for them, but they could possibly do it first week of June. But they, they anticipated, they did, I was required for the, um, anybody who bid on it to come out and visit the site. And the maintenance girl I talked to, she did come out and visit the site and looked at everything and they felt they could do it in, you know, four days and then wrap everything up on a Friday.
Donnie, this is kind of a curiosity, but so they, they take the fish and they bring them back to their place or where do they?
No, they bring actually like an above ground pool right with them. And they pump the water that's in the pond so it doesn't shock the fish. Yeah, they pump into like an above ground little, you know, like it's looked like about a 10-foot diameter pool. So they pump that water into a pool and then they put the, catch the fish, put them in there and they have an aeration system running the whole time. Keep the fish, you know, from going into shock or whatever. Then they do a thorough clean and then they pump some water back and they put some new water in after the cleaning's done.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to block off, you know, a little bit of Bay Avenue or give them a section to set those tanks. But other than that, that's the only real thing that they need.
Right, you don't want somebody messing with that.
Right.
I was pleasantly surprised, especially when he started making phone calls to Clyde's. I mean, I mean, I mean, they work for some top-notch people. All right.
People.
Well, I, I'd like to make a motion that we award the contract for the cleaning of the ponds to Harmony Ponds for 12,460.
Any discussion now? I'm looking. Nope, all right.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand. Can you see everybody at one time? I can't.
I can. I can't see Greg. Did you raise your hand, Greg?
I'm gonna spamming.
Okay.
You're abstaining, is that what you said?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright. So let's, um, so we have five one, or five with one abstaining. Alright, congratulations to Harmony, so give a call. On to item eight. Right, yup, item eight is an introduction and, and a resolution, let me pull it up, because I know I gotta read it. So as you know, we're part of a program for our circuit grant writer, and, and whatever questions you might have, Joe's on here to be able to, so you can answer that, but, so tonight, I'm going to introduce, and then we're going to vote on resolution number 20-02, Maryland Circuit Rider Town Manager Program. So it's resolution of the mayor and council of North Beach approving the town's participation in the Maryland Circuit Rider Town Management Program as a member of North Beach slash Forest Heights Circuit. I don't, I believe, I don't, I don't think I need to read everything, do I, Stacy?
No, you're good, you read the, you read the heading.
So, we need to, I'm introducing it, we need to vote on it. Participant, how many years now, Joe or Stacy?
This is our, um, this is our third-
Well, this is at least our third year.
It's our third year, it'll be our third year.
So, yes, uh, Liz-
I guess, I guess because I'm new to this game, I just don't understand what that is, is that because we don't really have a town manager based, you know, based on our, our bylaws and we, we use those services, I don't understand it.
No, the program, there's two types of government, and that's the administrator type of municipality. And then there is the mayor council with the mayor being the administrator. We have that type of government. With that, we need someone to help us write grants and make grants, so the circuit writer is brought on to help do that. And some towns, she, the person, whoever that circuit writer is, will actually administer, act as the administrator, but we don't have that government.
And Joanne, I would just add, this is like a great resource and benefit, I mean, it's basically, right, we get a, we get a grant, we get a circuit writer as part of a, a grant, so we get someone to help write grants at a huge cost savings to the town.
That's correct.
That's Stacy's computer.
We'll get that fixed.
And how does that impact the grant writer that we have right now?
She is it.
She is it.
Okay, I'm clear now, thank you.
Good questions, good questions. Alright, so I presented the resolution to you, now I need, uh, have a motion to approve.
Move.
Does she have, alright. Does she have to read it, Stacy, or, or we're fine with my introduction of it?
You're good.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion, all in favor? Alright, good.
Greg, Greg, are you abstaining?
We'll show you how to show, show everybody, alright. The next item, which was the item that we added, is the ordinance introduction. Hold on. So really what I'm doing today, correct me if I'm wrong Stacy, is just introducing this.
Yes, you do not need a motion or anything, you're just reading it into record.
Okay, I'm going to read it, ordinance number, uh, ordinance 20-01, operating budgets for the general fund sewer, water, and capital projects fund fiscal year-
That should say 2021.
21.
Yes.
2021, so operating budgets for the general fund sewer, water, and capital projects fund fiscal year 2021.
And you'll vote on this next month, when you finalize your budget.
Alright, thank you, thank you, let's go down now, we're going to council report, so Stacy, if you can help them, whatever order you want, you can call off on.
Okay. Mr. Dotson?
Hello, everyone. I don't have anything really to contribute, but other than, uh, stay safe and continue to be healthy, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hagan.
About the same thing, except that thanks to Lisa, we're moving forward on Sustainable Maryland, which we are up for recertification this year.
Absolutely.
Mr. Hummel?
Thank everybody for tuning in on these, and I hope soon enough we can all start getting haircuts, because I know I need it. So, that's it for me.
Ms. Lawden?
Again, like everyone says, thank, thank you for attending, I just want to let everyone know that although I don't have a committee put in place yet, I am working on the Heal Initiative, I have a meeting tomorrow with a Calvert County official to talk about how we can collaborate with the older adults initiatives that would be coming out of the Heal Initiative, and then once I get through that, start looking at what we need to do to look at workplace wellness, so those are my thoughts, thank you.
Dr. Shaieta?
I just want to thank everyone for being here online with us, and stay safe, stay healthy.
And Mr. Trunkan?
First, just want to let Councilman Hummel know that I do my own hair, so I can help you out if you need any help, cut just like this. More seriously, real quick, I did miss a comment from Lisa Garrett earlier, we were discussing the Koi Ponds, I just want to circle back to that really, really quick. I have this question to Donnie. Will they be removing plant materials like the yellow iris that are clogging up the filtration mats?
Yes, they will.
They will?
That's, that will be part of their cleaning, yes.
Thank you. Other than that, everybody stay safe and take this reopening cautiously, we don't want to go out there and, and be too crazy too quickly. Try to keep the, the curve as low as possible, and have a great weekend.
I'll, I'll keep my comments brief, because we need to go into closed session, but, as you know, Monday, we opened up the boardwalk, the bike path, Sunrise Garden, Overlook Park, we opened up the bathrooms, cleaned those every two hours. We closed off the benches. We put signage everywhere, and we're going to continue to approve, you know, staff is, is serious about this, we're serious about this, we're going to, we're going to err on safety at all times. Last night, at SM, Southern Maryland Municipal Association meeting, we talked about it, today, we had a very large discussion with all the mayors of the state and how the governor's words impacted. For us, it didn't really change a whole lot, because our stage one, we, we, you know, we really opened up on Monday. You know, we get a lot of conversation, questions, I know staff is, you know, getting them about the beach, about the fishing pier, and about the parks, or excuse me, Callas Park Playground. Those areas are not going to be open anytime soon. It is, the beaches are community beaches, you know, it, it's, it's something that, that when we do open it, we will do the best we can to make sure that it's controlled environment. The virus is not gone, it's, it's, I don't, I know people are getting tired of being inside, but it's not gone. And we, as leadership, and I, all our staff, need to make sure that what we do is, is for the health and wellness of, of everybody, not just our residents and our staff. So, you know, we're going to continue to err on safety, we need the patience of the public. We're very blessed to be in a community that everybody wants to come to, which is good, and, and, and we love that, we appreciate that, but right now, we, we need teamwork. We, we need people to continue to, six feet on the boardwalk, six feet on the bike path, six feet in the parks. You know, the, the face masks are not mandatory out in public, but we are, we are highly recommending them to everyone. Please, because it, it's, it's, you know what, it's, it's a deadly, deadly disease, I had a nurse stop me today on the, she, I was standing up, talking to staff, trying to organize some stuff, and she pulled by, she yelled at the window, and she explained that the, the COVID-19 is like the movie Frozen, when that person blows the ice crystals, and she says she's on the ward where it starts at the bottom of the lungs and works its way up, and when it gets to the top, it's a painful, painful death. I'm not here to argue numbers, I'm not here to defend anything, what I'm trying to say is that we as a town will continue to err on safety. I cannot thank the council enough, staff enough, for supporting all the decisions we made as a team. I mean, we got 20-some members on our team, and I'm very excited about that, so God bless all of you, I appreciate, you know, everybody tuning in today. Thank you for making, for saying that, I'm going to start using that for a while. That is it for me, we're going to make the motion to adjourn, to go into, and I gotta read this, closed session, there's, Stacy, we're fixing that tomorrow, I promise.
She's gonna hit me, she's gonna hit me.
Before a contractor's order or bids are open to discuss a matter directly related to negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or disclosure would adversely impact ability of the public body to participate in competitive building and proposal process as authorized by the general provision, provisions, articles, excuse me, article of annotated code of the Public General Law of Maryland, Section 3, 305B14 is why we're going into closed session, so can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting, council stay on? But everybody else, Paul, you can remove everybody else, do I have a motion?
Move to adjourn to executive session.
Alright, any discussion, all in favor, raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye, 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 fantastic, thank you so much, thank you for coming, everybody.
Good night.
Your council.